All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, November 17th, 2021 to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. The flag is behind me.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Now, we are still operating under our COVID safety procedures. And to that end, to make it a little bit easier for the public, we're allowing public comment to come through. We'll have two opportunities for public comment tonight. First one will be limited to agenda items only, and then the second one will be at the end of the meeting. If you'd like to make a public comment via email, you can do that by writing to publiccomment@nhtwp.org and send that in. If you would like to speak for any of the agenda items, there are signup sheets in the back. Or if you'd like to speak at the end on non-agenda items, I think there's two sheets back there. So sign up on whichever one you like. We have a very small crowd tonight. So we'll move on for public comment for agenda items.
Is there going to be a chance to ask questions after the presentation of the budget?
Possibly. What would be under...
No, would I go now or do I wait?
Go ahead. Go now. Thanks.
Good evening. Joe Johnston, 41 Grant Drive. I was hoping to watch the budget first, but possibly my questions would be answered because may... I'll ask the same questions that I asked last year, and that was, I asked what departments were in the red last year due to COVID or whatever other reasons? And the answer, according to my notes from last year, was the Parks and Rec was like 74,000 in the red, and the Country Club was 749 in the red. So I'd like to know if there's any other funds in the red this year and, you know, and report, and I would like to report on the two that I just mentioned, if they're still in the red and by how much, whether it got worse or better. And then the second question would be, what is our total debt at the end of the year? And what is the payoff date of that debt? So those questions. Thank you.
Thanks. So what we'll just ask, if Mr. Pellegrino has that information today, he could do it during the presentation. If he doesn't, we'll have to just get it to you or what have you. Thanks.
This is like the Super Bowl Sunday for the township's finances. So he had it last year, I'm sure he has it this year.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that's it for public comment on agenda items. If you have it now, that's fine. If you wanted to do it during your presentation, that's fine. But we're just going to have the answer. We're not going to have a question and answer tonight. If there's more information, we'll do it.
At the end of the year, we're projecting that the...
Your thing is not...
Oh, sorry.
Thanks, Bob.
At the end of the year, we're projecting that the Parks and Recreation Department will still have a negative fund balance, which is going to be addressed as part of the budget. That the Country Club will also have a negative fund balance, which will continue into 2022. And at the end of the year, we're projecting the Capital Reserve Fund will have a negative fund balance, which we're planning to address in the 2022 budget.
Do you have any... Can you just say what the amounts are?
Sure. Year-end estimate for Parks and Recreation is 257,000, which is getting worse or getting worse from the prior year. Country Club is 444,000, which is getting better. And Capital Reserve was 667,000. Now, in the Capital Reserve Fund, you have to remember that it doesn't have any specific dedicated revenue, other than what we transfer from the general fund or what we receive or budget from grant programs. So that again would be addressed in the 2022 budget. We're planning to increase the contribution from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund in 2022 to eliminate that negative fund balance. We will also be, in the 2022 budget, moving some of our American Rescue Plan funds that we received in June to the Parks and Recreation Fund to eliminate that negative fund balance for next year. And the Country Club will continue to run at a deficit, although we do see significant improvement in their revenue. And next year, we expect that they will continue to dig out of the hole. So probably in 2023, we will be back in the black at the Country Club.
That's great. I think you'll expand more on that probably during your budget presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't going to talk too much about that, other than really focus on what we're doing next year as part of the budget process.
Perfect. Thanks, Bob. We'll move on to consent items. Approval of minutes. Frank?
Unless there are objections, I request that the minutes of the October 27th to 2021 and the November 9th, 2021 be approved by unanimous consent.
Any objections? Okay, approved by consent. Thank you. Move to accounts payable. Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for November 3rd, 2021. Total all funds, 345,080. And I have the bills list for November 17th, 2021. Total all funds, 1,029,091.37.
Any objections? Not approved by consent. Thank you. Now, move on to new business. And first up is Eileen. Consider a bid awards for yard waste.
Ta-da. The Southwest Bucks County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which consists of Lower and Upper Southampton and Northampton Township, secures contracts for weekly curbside trash collection, recyclable collection, yard waste collection, and yard waste disposal. On November 10th, SWIPSCAC opened for bids for a new contract for yard waste disposal only. The current contract for disposal of yard waste is with Waste Management, and it expires on December 31st, 2021. The new contract is for a five-year period. Three bids were received, with Waste Management having the lowest bid of $42 per ton for 2022, with a slight increase for each of the contract period of five years, ending with $48 per ton in 2025. Since Waste Management was the lowest responsible bidder, I would like to read the motion awarding the contract to Waste Management.
Please do.
I move to award a bid for yard waste disposal for the five-year period from January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2026, to Waste Management of Pennsylvania, as received by the Bucks County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and authorize the township manager to execute all contract documents required for the bid award in accordance with the bid specifications for this service. Specifications, sorry, for this service.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, anything further, Eileen?
Just that we understand that it is only for yard waste disposal.
Thanks. Frank?
Nothing further from me.
Kim?
Nothing from me.
Barry?
And no comment from me.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we're going to consider a resolution appointing the township manager as a designated agent to execute agreements with FEMA and PIMA for disaster assistance. Barry?
Yeah, thanks, Adam. So we have an application that we need to draft a resolution for, designating our township manager as a township agent, authorizing to execute agreements with FEMA. And basically, we're looking for a $34,000 grant from the government. We have about $34,000 of the damage. The damage was, you know, mostly in Big Meadow, Both Field. We had some damage with fencing there. Also in Old Temperance Lane, we had some damage. Sackus Ford Road and other parts of town. And we're taking advantage of a grant from the federal government for this, and we're just authorizing our township manager to do that. So if I could read the motion, Adam?
Please.
See, I move to adopt Resolution Number R-21-24, authorizing the township manager to execute for, on behalf of the Northampton Township, Bucks County, all required forms and documents for the purpose of obtaining financial assistance under the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Fund.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second. And any further comment, Barry?
The only thing I'll mention is that I do feel very pleased that the townships have been very successful in getting any number of grants throughout the years. And this is another example of, you know, the money's there, so we want to take advantage of it, and we had the damage, so I'm very supportive of it.
Kim?
I'm good.
Eileen?
Frank?
And no further comment from me. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is consider authorizing an ordinance to update various sections of the Township Code to modify outdated and inconsistent regulations. Frank?
Before the board is a general ordinance amendment addressing the administrative and inconsistent items in our current code, at least some of them. Specifically, these items include membership requirements of the Blake Committee, eliminating residency requirements for the township manager, deleting the fire insurance proceeds escrow requirement, and amending soliciting requirements, modifying building numbering requirements, and adding board and commission expectations. Just with some of them, with the membership committee, the change I believe here is that previously, the chairman had the option to make an appointment of one member, and now it's the board of supervisors she'll vote, a board supervisor she'll appoint one member from the board. So I think that was the change there. Change of the other one, it simply eliminates the residency requirement for township manager. That makes a lot of sense, because, you know, if you're recruiting for a new manager, not that Bob's going anywhere in the immediate future, but when you're going to recruit for a new manager, you really want to broaden the scope to get the best possible candidate for the job. So that makes a lot of sense. We're deleting just the fire insurance proceeds escrow is just outdated, and we don't need that anymore. So we're eliminating that. Numbering on houses becomes important so that the fire department and the rescue squad and everybody else can find the house. So we're really setting up some requirements so that, you know, it's some consistency in how you can identify a house. Makes sense, and it's purely a public safety issue from my perspective. And the board and commissions, we're simply saying the board of supervisors may adopt and amend bylaws for any board and commission by resolution. That just gives the board of supervisors more control over what's happening in the boards and commissions that are advisory to us. It has no impact, for example, on the zoning hearing board, which is an independent board in the township. So with that, if I can find my first page here again, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, Frank.
I move to authorize advertisement of a public meeting for an ordinance amending the Northampton Township Code related to the general administrative requirements and the elimination of inconsistent provisions for Wednesday, December 15th, at 7:30 p.m. at the Northampton Township Building.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Discussion, anything further? Frank?
Nothing from me.
Eileen?
The only thing, this is only the beginning.
Amen to that.
We have, you know, asked our zoning and our ordinances and, you know, Mike Solomon to go through it, because there are many that are outdated and need to be changed.
Kim?
I'm good.
Barry? Nothing further from me. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And budget, Kim?
Yes. The board is required by the Second Class Township Code to adopt a preliminary budget and advertise its availability for public inspection for a period of 20 days. The budget may be adopted anytime after the 20-day period, but it must be adopted by December 31st. And with that, I'd like Mr. Pellegrino to make his presentation about the budget.
I will be as brief as possible tonight, but I have a number of slides that I think you will find very interesting. All right. This is what I'm going to talk about tonight. I'm going to give you a financial summary, very high level. I'm going to talk about some impacts that the various services we have are on the budget. I want to explain some of the infrastructure projects we're doing. We're talking about real estate taxes, and I want to have a very brief mention of the fund balance, which I say every year is too low. So the budget, as it's presented to you, maintains our existing services. We continue to invest in our infrastructure. We have a lot of projects, which you'll see later on in this presentation, that are either in design or under construction. There are no personnel reductions in the budget. In fact, we are filling positions now that we have had vacant for a couple of years in the Police Department and the Public Works Department. Next year, there's no refuse fee increase, but you'll hear me say later on that we will definitely probably need one in 2023. And there is a tax increase in the budget. There are, there's a 2.85 mil increase, which we are targeting for fire services, which, as you all know, we are compelled to fund because of the lack of volunteers. And there is a .25 mil increase for the rescue squad, and I'll explain a little bit about that later on as to why we need to do that. So our total budget is 47.3 million. We have $40 million in operations, 5.2 million in capital, and 2 million in the pension plans. If you do a comparison from this year, for next year to this year, and you look at these numbers, you'll see that operations are up. About $1 million of that is going to go toward capital investment. The rest is going to go toward personnel. You can see that we are invigorating our capital infrastructure program with some additional money to finish some of the projects that we've been working on for a number of years, or to at least get them ready for funding by other agencies. And the cost of our pension plans is up about $100,000. So this chart shows you how we spend our money. And if you look at it, you can see that better than 50% of our expense is in wages and employee benefits. We're looking at about 12% for capital improvements, 10% for refuse, 7% overall for debt expense, and 6% for pensions, 4% for roads, and 14% for other operating expenses, kind of lumping other smaller items together. For revenue, this shows you by fund how our revenues come into the township government. 39% come in from the general, to the general fund. This is your earned income taxes, your transfer taxes, and a portion of the real estate taxes. The capital fund revenues come primarily from the general fund and/or grant programs. The Country Club is fee-based, obviously, as is the refuse fund. Pensions, we get from a grant from the state and also what we earn on our investments. And the rest are either tax-related or from grant programming. This slide shows the appropriations by fund. So as you know, we have 20 or 21 different funds. We use fund accounting in government. Might be a little foreign to people, but if you look at each fund as a separate company, that might help understand how we budget better. So the general fund is obviously the biggest fund. We're, our Police Department, our Public Works Department, all the administration staff, and others, other personnel expenses are primarily paid out of the general fund. The only other fund that really has salaries in it is the Park and Recreation Fund and the Fire Protection Fund, now that we've started to hire and pay full-time firefighters. This chart shows us just the operating portion of the budget, excluding capital. So you can see that as far as operations are concerned, police are 20, a little over 25%, and streets and highways are a little over 16%, as it should be, because our primary government services are public protection and transportation system. You see there that the Country Club is 13.3%. While it's a big portion of our budget, please remember that it pays for itself. It has revenue from its banquet sales, from golf, and so forth, that pay for its expenses. Now, as I mentioned earlier, it is running at a deficit, but we expect that that will correct itself. We're already seeing significant increases in bookings at the banquet facility, and we haven't even started to see some of the regular golf outings and other commercial events returned to the facility. So as those start to come back, I think we'll see that number go up. Parks and Recreation, we spend about 6.5% on operations, and as you know, we have a wonderful Parks and Recreation program. And Trash and Recycling is about 11%. But again, that's a fee-based service, so whatever fee we charge the residents covers the cost of that service. And we try and keep that fee as low as possible through our affiliation with Southwest Bucks Solid Waste Advisory Committee and our partners, Upper and Lower Southampton Township. And I'll just mention that fire and rescue services, while it's 7.5%, has grown in the past few years, and you need to know that it will continue to grow as we build out a full-time fire department. So budget impacts. What are they? At the top of the list is our fire and EMS services. I want to talk a little bit about that. I want to talk about trash service, because we have some changes coming in 2022, and, or should say 2023. I want to show you some of the infrastructure improvements and projects that we're working on. And as I mentioned early on, I want to just briefly mention fund balance, which I'll again say is typically too low. There are two reports that talk about emergency services. The first is a report called SR6. It was done by the Senate, the Pennsylvania Senate, a bipartisan report in 2018. And it concluded that Pennsylvania volunteer first responders have significantly declined in the last 30, 40 years. If you see the numbers there, you see in the 70s, there were about 300,000. Today, it's about 37,000, a vast, vast drop. The other report, and the SR6 talked about both fire and EMS. The other report that recently came out this year called "The Future of Bucks County's Fire Services" was done by the County Planning Commission at the behest of the county commissioners. And there's just a very short quote there that I thought was important to repeat. Decline in volunteerism is a national, state, and local trend, and that is absolutely true. We're seeing it all over the place. This was out of the SR6 report, and it concludes that fewer people are volunteering, staffing performance is less than needed in many cases, and the whole first responder system is being strained. It's a recruitment of personnel and retention of personnel problem, and if we don't address it, we'll see an expansion of paid staffing and related tax increases. That is essentially what is happening in Northampton Township, and it is happening in most municipalities around the urban areas where we've had significant population growth and the need for a more stronger fire response and emergency medical service response. So this is background for what is happening in our own community today. And just want to talk a little bit about the fire company. They've been around for more than 100 years. We've had a very long free ride. We had very strong volunteers. I still think we have a number of volunteers that put time in, but you have to remember, these folks, they have to first go through 200 hours of service or training to get their firefighter one license, and then they drill every Monday night, and there are events on weekends and other days, and they're up in the middle of the night. And these folks all have other jobs, full-time jobs. So when their beeper goes off, or their, I don't know what you call it today, but they get a call, they go. And those are the folks that are either aging out or are not, not coming back into the fire company to volunteer. And I think the latter is probably, well, they're both happening, but we're just not getting the volunteer base that we used to have. on. And as I mentioned early on, I want to just briefly mention fund balance, which I'll again say is typically too low. There are two reports that talk about emergency services. The first is a report called SR6. It was done by the Senate, the Pennsylvania Senate, a bipartisan report in 2018. And it concluded that Pennsylvania volunteer first responders have significantly declined in the last 30, 40 years. If you see the numbers there, you see in the 70s, there were about 300,000. Today, it's about 37,000, a vast, vast drop. The other report, and the SR6 talked about both fire and EMS. The other report that recently came out this year called "The Future of Bucks County's Fire Services" was done by the County Planning Commission at the behest of the county commissioners. And there's just a very short quote there that I thought was important to repeat. "Decline in volunteerism is a national, state, and local trend," and that is absolutely true. We're seeing it all over the place. This was out of the SR6 report, and it concludes that fewer people are volunteering, staffing performance is less than needed in many cases, and the whole first responder system is being strained. It's a recruitment of personnel and retention of personnel problem, and if we don't address it, we'll see an expansion of paid staffing and related tax increases. That is essentially what is happening in Northampton Township, and it is happening in most municipalities around the urban areas where we've had significant population growth and the need for a more stronger fire response and emergency medical service response. So this is background for what is happening in our own community today. And just want to talk a little bit about the fire company. They've been around for more than 100 years. We've had a very long free ride. We had very strong volunteers. I still think we have a number of volunteers that put time in, but you have to remember, these folks, they have to first go through 200 hours of service or training to get their firefighter one license, and then they drill every Monday night, and there are events on weekends and other days, and they're up in the middle of the night. And these folks all have other jobs, full-time jobs. So when their beeper goes off, or their, I don't know what you call it today, but they get a call, they go. And those are the folks that are either aging out or are not coming back into the fire company to volunteer. And I think the latter is probably, well, they're both happening, but we're just not getting the volunteer base that we used to have. Now, we recognized this problem in 2008. We filed for a SAFER grant, which is Staffing and Fire Emergency Response. It's a FEMA grant. We were able to get a grant of $500,000 in 2009, which was a five-year grant in declining amounts, and we hired four full-time firefighters at the time. And I can tell you, when we did that, we reduced our emergency response from the fire company by 50%. So what used to take 10 minutes to get to a call now took five. Those folks only worked from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The rest of the time was volunteer-based response. And as time marched on, we realized that we were still in a problem, and we again hired five new people in 2019, and we got another grant from SAFER, from the program of $900,000. Now, this was a three-year grant program. They shortened it from five years to three years, and next year is the third year of that grant payback. So what happens is, we file every year for reimbursement based on the salaries we pay and the benefits we pay, and we get a check. And once that $900,000 is exhausted, or the grants are exhausted, the entire cost of the service is on the taxpayers here. Trying to help the whole fire service, we implemented an on-call program in 2019 where we paid firefighters, volunteers, to be on-call. And we paid them nominal amounts of 30, I think it was $30 and $60. $30 if they stayed at home. If they stayed in the firehouse and were immediately available, we paid them $60 a night. And that was about $100,000 cost to our budget. That worked very well and continues to work, and we still do that. But even here, we see that there is a decline in the number of people willing to sign on for that program. So what do we do? Next year, we are planning to file another grant application, which we will do in the spring. That grant amount is going to be just maybe under $1.5 million. We've been successful in getting them before, and we think we'll be able to get that grant again. That will allow us to hire 10 more full-time people. Now, what I didn't mention, and I should have mentioned, is that when we got the second grant in 2019, maybe it was 2018, we were able to fund a 12-hour shift. And our paid firefighters were now two platoons that worked 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and we relied on volunteers in the overnight hours. But that was seven days a week. What we can do if we hire these new firefighters is provide 24/7 coverage. Seven days a week, 24 hours a day, four platoons, and I have to emphasize that this only allows us to get one truck out of the fire station. That's it, one truck. Now, we have three fire stations that eventually need to be staffed, but we are going to operate initially out of the Rich Borough Station full-time if we can get the grant and we can hire these folks. Now, I guess the good news for 2022 is that we'll file for the grant in the spring. We'll hear in the fall. We won't actually hire these folks till much later in the year. So the impact on the 2022 budget is relatively small. 2023 will be a different story. If we get the grant, that will soften the blow, but we are, this budget and future budgets will need to prepare for the full impact of paying for a 24/7 fire department with one truck. Now, eventually, you can see how this expands. If we need to staff the Holland Station, we're going to need another 20 people. And if we can't get volunteers, we're going to need to look at doing that, because it's a very long drive from Rich Borough to the lower part of Holland. And response time in a fire is everything. Minutes count. So I'm preparing you for what could be a rather expensive endeavor as we march down this road to building a paid, a full-time paid fire department. Part of the process of doing this is to build new fire stations, and you all know, we floated a bond last year, or this year, I should say. And we have an estimated construction cost for two fire stations, Rich Borough and Holland, of $32 million. We will start really having to look at a tax increase to fund this in 2024. So that would be the next time we would look at raising taxes, in my opinion, to fund this. We are in the design phase. We're ready to bid these projects in December, and we will open bids in January, and we will have something on your agenda for the January meeting to consider rewarding bids. If you do that, we will expect construction to start in April, and you can plan on at least a year's construction for the Rich Borough Station, and then if we get one bid for both stations, another six months to finish the Holland Station. So we're looking at 18, but I would say 18 to 24 months to build both facilities. I wanted to share this with you. This is an artist's rendering of the Rich Borough Station. The road on the left is Newtown-Richborough Road, and the road on the right is Township Road. You can see the big cell tower in the back of the building, which actually increased the cost of this project somewhat because we had to work around it. But we did that, and this station is 36,000 square feet. It has overnight facilities for both men and women, which we do not have now. We don't have adequate sleeping quarters. We don't have adequate restroom facilities. We don't have adequate living spaces. And if we're going to have a 24/7 fire department, we need all of those things. This is a long, long video. That's enough on the fire stations. I think you get the message there. On the rescue squad, Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad is our service provider. They provide services for the entire township. I found out that they have been providing this service from the 1950s, and they built a station finally, been operating out of Feasterville and servicing the community. And we built the station in the 90s on Township Road, and now we have a staffed facility right here in Rich Borough for the township. They can still service lower portions of the township out of Feasterville. Each year, we get reports from the county on response times for all of the 13 rescue squads in the county. Our service provider, Tri-Hampton, is in service 99.9% of the times. So you might ask, well, what happens to the other 1.10%? It's covered by adjacent rescue squads. If they don't have a unit available because, say, they're on another call, another company will come in and provide that service. They average a response time of five minutes to get to calls. That comes from the county data. But I have to tell you, they struggle because they have low wages for paramedics and EMTs. I found out that full-time EMTs earn between $15 and $17 an hour, and full-time paramedics earn around $19 to $21 an hour. Now, these are people that have certifications. They have continuing education credit requirements, and they work long hours. They work lousy hours, if you ask me, and they do suffer from burnout. We need to support them, because we want, we need and want and should want this kind of emergency service in the community. One of the things that recently occurred was that the county commissioners announced that they were going to help fund all of the rescue squads in the county, and they have American Rescue Plan funds. They are willing to commit to help with a three-year solvency for these organizations. So they determined, in talking with all the rescue squad chiefs in the county, that they need about $8 million to support all of the 13 squads over a three-year period, and they're willing to spend $6 million of their ARPA money to do that, but they're asking the local communities to participate. They threw the number of 20% out, and so $2 million spread across the municipalities in the county to acquire, $6 million from the county seems like a reasonable request. They want us to have, I guess, some skin in the game, if I can use that term. So that is the reason I'm recommending we raise the rescue squad tax by .25 mils. It will give the squad not just money for three-year solvency, but will give them money going forward of about $145,000 a year. And they need it, because they need to increase their wages, and they need to better retain their employees. They are a full-time service organization. They have some volunteers, but not many. And what happens is, in their world, paramedics who are making $18 to $21 an hour go to another rescue squad agency, and they get a $2 increase if they move. Or they go to a hospital-based rescue squad, and there are a few of those that serve the county, which are not, by the way, included in the county program, and they get significant increases in their wages. Most all these folks have second jobs, because they have to. So in the budget, is the quarter mil tax increase to take advantage of the county's offer to help fund this organization? Talk a little bit about trash services. You all heard the term SWIPSWAC, Southwest Bucks Solid Waste Advisory Committee. SWIPSWAC has been around since 1988. We've worked together with Upper and Lower Southampton. We have four contracts, and we broke it out years ago because we thought we could get some economy of scale by doing this and keep the cost down, and you'll see in a minute that we have. So we have four contracts. One is for collection, refuse recycling yard waste. Then we have three contracts for disposal. Yard waste disposal, you just heard about. We're renewing that contract with Waste Management for five years. A refuse disposal is with Wheelabrader, the incinerator in Falls Township. And Waste Management also has the disposal contract for recycling materials. Believe it or not, it costs more per ton to dispose of recycling materials than it does trash or yard waste. And I can't explain why, it just does. So right now, we have a fee-based service, as you know. Residents pay $299 a year for all of that stuff. Our collection contract with JP Mascaro expires in 2022, at the end of the year. So SWIPSWAC next year will be putting bid specs together and bidding that, and we hope to do that early in the year, so we have some certainty about who will be collecting our trash beginning in 2023. But I fully expect that, as you saw with the yard waste disposal contract, there will be increases in the collection contract. And I'm virtually certain that you will need to increase the refuse collection fee in 2023 to pay for this. So I love this graph, because it shows that we've done a good job in keeping the cost down. In 2010, residents paid $340 a year for trash service, collection, disposal, and everything. We were able to decrease that amount, because we did get some grants from DEP, which aren't really available anymore, and we managed to get reductions in some of our contracts over the years. We held that line at $264 for five years, and then now it's been increased since 2020 to $299, $300, and it will stay that way for three years. But again, I want to emphasize, this is not going to last. We have increased costs now for yard waste disposal. Recycling disposal costs fluctuate. It depends on the marketability of our recycling materials. So if Waste Management can turn around and sell our recycling materials for a profit, we benefit from that by paying lower disposal fees. But they're still around $74 or $75 a ton. It could be more than that if the market for recyclable materials just drops, for whatever reason. Too much material, no buyers, there's a lot of variables for that. I want to talk about infrastructure projects, and we have a lot of them. We have the Township Road Extension and Roundabout Project, you've heard about for at least three or four years. We've been in the design phase of this. We got a grant to pay for most of the design. We were planning on looking at construction grants with a 70/30 match. I'm happy to report that we are trying to get, and I think we will get, that project on the State Transportation Improvement Plan, which means that PennDOT will pick the project up, and they will construct it at their cost, with no further financial obligation from the township. The same is true of the Buck Road Streetscape Project. I may have described that earlier tonight. That is an improvement project that is from Old Bristol and Buck Roads to about Chinkwipin Road on Buck Road. It is an intersection, realignment at Old Bristol and Buck. It's replacing the bridge over Mill Creek, widening it, creating left-turn lanes going up Old Bristol, and also left-turn lanes coming down Old Bristol, and adding sidewalks, trees, and the like, all the way up to Chinkwipin Road. A left-turn lane at Holland and East Holland is under construction, or will be under construction shortly. That was a safety issue that we identified when the Holland Middle School was expanded. The school district contributed $20,000 toward the project. The total project cost is about $160,000. Again, that's under construction. We'll pay for part of that this year, but I expect that the final invoices won't come in until 2022, and we've budgeted for that in the 2022 budget. The same is true with the Rich Borough Sidewalk Project. This project came in at $650,000. We got a $500,000 grant from the state for that project. It is under construction. If you've been down into downtown, you see that. They're working their way up toward Olmwood House Road. When they get to Newtown-Richborough Road, they will stop, but as the new giant food store is constructed, part of their project obligation is to complete the sidewalk along the frontage of the shopping center. So we hope to have sidewalks completed in Rich Borough with this project and the next project, which is Ironworks Creek Sidewalk Project, which runs from about the old Wawa down to Tanyard Road. Now, we separated this out, because there are some challenges with this one. We have to cross the creek. There are some issues with the area along Ironworks Creek Park, where we actually have to cantilever the sidewalk. This is a $900,000 or million-dollar construction cost. We got a grant from the state to pay for that. Our obligation on this project was to do the engineering work and acquire the rights of way. We have two more properties where we need temporary construction easements. We're working to get those, and once we do, the state will put this project, or maybe will have to put the project out to bid. I haven't gotten clear indication on how this is going to work, but the state is paying for the entire cost of construction, and that would be on both sides of Second Street Pike. We're continuing our paving program. Our goal is 10 miles. We're not going to get there next year. We're able to get to nine miles. We've had, with the lack of people driving, buying gasoline during the pandemic, over two years- two years, we had a $300,000 reduction in our liquid fuels funds, and that has hurt our paving program. We're also concerned with the cost of fuel because the cost of oil affects the cost of the blacktop that we buy for our paving. So we're trying to be conservative, but we think we're going to get to nine miles. New Road Trail is also a project we've been working on. This will connect New Road to Municipal Park, right adjacent to Maureen Welch Elementary School. Again, we have a state grant of $237,000 for this work. We bid this project several years ago. It was way over budget. So we've trimmed back the project scope. We've removed the parking lot, and we've worked now around the wetland area, which had caused us to have a costly bridge over a wetland area that we really don't need. So we're hoping that now we can get the project in under in a reasonable budget and that we'll have a very small out-of-pocket cost. And last but not least, Jacksonville and Alms House Road Roundabout. You may not have heard about this, but this is a situation where we invested about $25,000 in concept plans because, as you all know, this intersection is a mess. And that $25,000 was that investment and the concept plans we submitted to the County Planning Commission were well-received. They recommended this project to the state, and this project is now on the State Transportation Improvement Plan. It is in design. The state is paying for that, and the state is paying for the full cost of construction. I'm going to show you in a minute what they're planning. But this is about a $3 million construction project that we will have for the benefit of the township with a $25,000 investment. So these are the kinds of things that we do on a regular basis. I'm going to show you some of the projects here. This is the Township Road Extension and Roundabout. Very quickly, you see Second Street Pike, Bussledon Pike, and Township Road. This project is designed to relieve congestion at Alms House Road and Second Street Pike, and it allows traffic to travel east and west, north and south, not necessarily without necessarily having to go through that that intersection. This is the Buck Road Streetscape Project. The yellow area is the area that is getting a little bit of widening, sidewalks, streetlights, and trees. The orange section is the bridge that will be widened. And you can see on the at the intersection of Old Bristol, there's some widening on the left-hand side, there's sidewalk, and the signal will be replaced. This is the New Road Trail. This is 1,600 feet of new trail. It goes from New Road and connects to an existing trail and then takes us out to Municipal Park Trail along the along the school. This is the Jacksonville and Alms House Road Roundabout. PennDOT decided, after looking at six, I think it was six alternatives, that this was the best possible alternative to alleviate traffic congestion at this intersection. And this is the plan that is in design right now. The anticipated construction will start in 2023 with completion in 2024. So a lot of stuff going on, some that are in the process. We're looking at putting a traffic light at 332 Newtown Rich Borough Road and St. Leonard's Road. We have a pedestrian crossing at Fur Drive on Newtown Rich Borough Road that will get residents across the road safely, both to Tyler State Park and to our Civic Center and our Recreation Center. And it also includes a little bit of a trail in addition to the crossing that takes you into into the park. And then we have trail connections from Rockway to Tyler State Park. I'm going to show you a little bit of blow up here. This is the Fur Drive Newtown Rich Borough Road Crossing. It's a crossing. You can see the orange area that is trail that takes you safely into Number One Trail Lane and into Tyler State Park. And from there, there's connections both to our Civic Center and Recreation Center via trail. And of course, once you're in the park, there are trails that take you all through the park as well and into Newtown. This is a depiction, a blow up, of the other trail project from Rockway to Tyler State Park. There are two different colors on this slide because we've applied for two different grant programs. The yellow area from Rockway to St. Leonard's includes the construction of the traffic signal. We've got a grant application to fund both of those. And the blue area is a different grant application just for trail construction. And if you follow that line, it takes you all the way down Newtown Rich Borough Road to an existing trail that goes under the bridge and into Tyler State Park. So effectively, you could walk with our with our new trail system. You could walk from Rich Borough to Newtown safely. Little bit about real estate taxes. I like this graph because it depicts the drop in our real estate assessment that resulted from the 2008 economic downturn. Now, if you look at 2010, you see that big tall line. Our real estate assessment was almost $599 million. After 2009, folks started to file tax appeals and have assessments reduced, and we had a significant reduction all the way through 2013. That dropped about $15 million of our assessed value, and that that affects the amount of real estate tax revenue we receive without touching the tax rate. And you can see that line is starting to come back. That trend line shows it's an upward direction. But folks aren't going back to the county to get their assessments raised. So the only way that happens is through new development and by new construction, new development of new homes, additions, commercial development improvements, and the like. So you can see in 2022, we're crawling our way back. And the way we've dealt with part of this was to increase our tax rate. You can see that green line that shows that we've done that, and we've done it for a variety of reasons. Most recently, because we need to fund emergency services to a higher level. The next chart shows you in numbers the reductions, and you can see that on the right-hand column, we had annual lost revenues just from the assessment reduction with the base year of 2010. What does that mean? Two and a half million dollars. It's about 4.2 mils over the last 11 years. So it's significant. And we've balanced that by sometimes cutting costs or reducing costs by not filling positions, for example, in 2015 and 2016 and 2017. And only recently have we started to plan to fill positions in our police department and in our public works department. We haven't also increased any personnel in any other departments. So how does the millage, how is it divided up? This shows you how. Almost nine mils goes to administration, police, zoning, and public works. Three and three-quarters goes to fire and emergency medical services, and this is for 2022. And you can see at the bottom about four and a half mils for debt, which hasn't increased in a number of years. So what does that mean for a median home assessment of $37,000? It means about $800 a year in real estate taxes to the township. Many people think they pay us thousands of dollars, and it's true that they pay thousands of dollars in real estate taxes, but it all doesn't come here. And I show you the monthly cost of $67 because I want people to realize and compare that to, I don't know, their phone bill, their cable bill, their electric bill. And for that amount of money, you get, I think, quite a level of service out of the township government. This is probably my favorite slide. This shows the portion of a dollar that comes to the township. And you can see right now, within 2022, will be about 12% of the total tax bill that a resident pays. So if you pay $1,000, we get $120 of that, and that's what we use to fund our emergency services, our public works department, our road system, and everything else that the township does for the community. And one, just one word on fund balance. The, I'm almost finished. The orange line shows what our fund balance, based on our appropriations, should be, as recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. They say 12% to 15% of our expenses in the general fund. This is just the general fund because other funds don't necessarily have a fund balance issue. A lot of them are self-supporting. You can see the blue line. Those are actual fund balances. And you can see, we're not, we're not embarrassed to operate at some pretty low fund balances. And I'm okay with that. But it is a problem long-term that we need to address, particularly if we are going to start to have to fund emergency services. And with a low fund balance, we can operate, but I can tell you, we have very low cash reserves in the first three months of the year. Very low, $2 million, $2.5 million. And we're not relying on the general fund at that point because the general fund is running at a negative fund balance in those three months. We're relying on other funds that have cash on hand to pay our payroll and to do things like that. And that is the reason why, for at least last year and a few years before that, we've recommended a tax anticipation note, and we're recommending one next year of about $3 million. So this past year, we had one for $3 million. We borrowed the money. It helped us with cash flow in the first five months of the year. We paid it back by the end of May. So very low cost. I think it was a percent and a half interest rate. I think it cost us about $9,000 to borrow that money and help with cash flow. And then I want to end on a really positive note. I want to introduce you, well, no, I'm ahead of myself. I love this quote from Thomas Jefferson. "A perfect republic can materialize only in a small jurisdiction like a township. They prove themselves the wisest inventor ever devised by the wit of man for the perfect exercise of self-government and for its preservation." And he said that or wrote that in 1816. And this is the note I want to end on. I want to introduce you to our new canine. His name is Peko. He's the newest member of our police department. This is Officer John Hearn, who was our canine officer. They are both in training. And Peko will be trained to help find missing persons, and he will also be trained to sniff out bombing material. You know that we have three nursing facilities in the community. The police department often is is trying to help, and I think the fire company too, in helping find missing people who may have dementia or other diseases like that. And sometimes they leave the facility and their folks can't find them, and they call the police, they call the fire department, and they help. And Peko is going to help with with that service. He is a Belgian Malinois, and I think I pronounced that correct. He's a wonderful dog. I've met him, very friendly, and I think he's going to be a great addition to the police department. And I have one more slide, and that is questions or comments from anybody.
Well, maybe we'll entertain a motion, and then we can have some questions and comments.
Okay. Just, we, the board may make whatever changes it deems appropriate to the preliminary budget prior to its adoption. The board may also make changes to the adopted preliminary budget prior to the final adoption scheduled for the December 15, 2021 meeting, within the limits established by the Second Class Township Code. The code states that a line item, department total, may not be changed by more than 25%, and the total budget may not be changed by more than 10%. With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt the 2022 preliminary budget and advertise its availability for public inspection for a period of not less than 20 days, as required by the Second Class Township Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, Kim?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Bob and Bob Armelin, Julie, Bill. You guys did a great job with this budget. I also want to say that our police dog was not paid by taxpayer money. That was a private donation. But I would like to say, after, we've had a couple tough years with COVID and the ramifications of COVID. And I think that our staff has done an excellent job with with our budget. We are still a lean, mean, working machine. They really do their best to keep everything going. It's very, very important to me, when you become a supervisor, the most important thing is the health, welfare, and safety of our citizens. And to, if you have a fire at your house, or you need the police, or you need somebody to come for, you know, one of our EMS people, those minutes are the most important minutes in your whole entire life. So for us to put money into that is, to me, is a no-brainer. We have to support our emergency services. The other thing is our roads in North Hampton during the winter months. Hopefully, this year, we won't have a lot of snow, but when you come into North Hampton, you see how well our roads are plowed, taken care of, and that's because we have, we have great employees that work. And I also, I just want to say that I think that our, what we offer to our community is unbelievable for what you pay. And I love the dollar slide also because it shows you that what you're, and I love the new one with the $67 a month. It really just puts everything in perspective. And I just want to say thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Eileen?
It amazes me, every year, you do better. I mean, after COVID, you know, I didn't know how we were going to get through all of that. But you and Bob and Julie and Bill, you find a way, and it happens every year. I just have a few questions. You said about the tower behind the fire station. How much money do we make from that?
About 100, I don't know, $65,000 a year, $70,000.
So that's really all that we make from it? So it really wasn't something that we, you know, that it was, that it was there, and then we had to do with the the new fire station?
It used to be a little bit more, but some of the cell tower providers have dropped off.
Oh, okay. Also, is it in the budget to redo the old police building? Because if that's where the new fire, where the fire company is going to be until the place is built?
No. We are going to do some very minimal work in the old police station, and that will be done as part of the fire station project. So we have in the fire station budget funds for temporary facilities. We had planned to to maybe put up a temporary structure.
Right.
And we will do that right behind the old police station for housing the fire vehicles. But the old police station will work very well for 12 to 18 months as a as a temporary home for our paid firefighters. And so what we're doing- And so what we're doing in there is cleaning it out, cleaning it, and moving some furniture in. The fire company now, or the department, can start to move some of the things out of the Richborough Station that they might need, and move everyone over there, and then prepare for demolition.
I hope you fix the showers.
We will fix the showers, yes.
I remember we had a snowstorm, and you had to go and use them, and you said you were going to fix them up.
We did that.
Also, with the sidewalk fund, we have a fund of our own, don't we, because of, in lieu of?
We, we, we do collect fees in lieu of. We've used a lot of that money for the engineering services that were required for the Richborough sidewalk project and for the, the Ironworks Creek sidewalk project.
Okay.
But as we collect more, we'll, we'll continue to use it for those, for those types of things.
Okay. And lastly, we, the ARPA funding money from Bucks County for EMS, do you know why there's nothing for the fire companies? I mean, I know you meet with the county commissioners in a, maybe sometimes monthly basis. Has anyone ever questioned about that?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. And we are getting ARPA money, is that correct?
Yes. I, I meant to, and thank you for reminding me, I meant to mention that that's how we're fixing some of the shortfalls in some of the funds. We're, we're appropriating in the budget a million dollars to the fire fund. And $500,000 of our 2.1 million we got this year to the recreation fund. And we're doing that because the law, or the rules, that I should say, are coming out for the use of that money. Allow us to use it, first and foremost, to replenish lost revenue. And that's exactly what we're doing in the recreation department. And they lost a couple million dollars over the last two years. And I think just $500,000, as they dig out and start to have programs again next year, and full, full ser, full, full camps, they'll dig, eventually dig out of their hole. The million dollars will go into the fire service.
Good.
And some of the, well, a lot of the tax increase that goes to the general fund will also go into the fire service. It will do two things. It will help our fund balance in 2022 and at the end of 2022. And that gives us additional money that we will need in 2023 and 2024. We're at the cap for the fire tax. We're allowed to levy three mils, and that's it. So anything above that we have to, we need for the fire service, will have to run through the general fund. So it's a transfer from the general fund, as we raise that millage for fire service, to the fire fund to help pay for the fire services going forward. And that's what really this budget's setting us up for, is not necessarily next year, but the couple of years after that.
And Park and Rec in the past, before COVID, they were self-sufficient, didn't they?
They have always been self-sufficient.
Okay. I wanted, I wanted people to know that, because this is the first time they've ever had a negative.
If you, if you look at their tax rate of 1.6 mils, I don't think that's changed since 2008 or '09.
Right.
It's always been the same. The millage pays for park maintenance and administration, and the programs are self-funding.
Okay. I wanted everyone to realize that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Eileen. Frank?
Just two, just two observations where I think the state hurts us and causes us to have to place some burden on our residents. One is, as you've talked about, what needs to happen for emergency services, a simple change in the state law that would require insurance companies to pay directly to the emergency services units would give them a lot more money than they're collecting now because of the problem right now, what the insurance companies do is simply reimburse the individual. And somehow or another, that money just doesn't make it over to the emergency service units. And that's just stupid, in my view. I mean, I don't know, I don't know another way to say that.
Wrong. It's wrong.
It's wrong, yeah. The other one is, my pet, that I had hoped to sob before I got off this board, because of the Sterling Act, we, a number of our residents pay Philadelphia rather than paying our township. And between the actual, the part, the, the, there's two parts of that. One part of it is, the actual wage is paid to Philadelphia, you know, for whatever period they work in Philadelphia. And then what we call the super, the super credit, where they get credit for all of the tax dollars paid to Philadelphia, even if they worked, we'll say, 75% of the time in Northampton Township. That's costing the township, I, I, I guesstimate about $1.3 million, $1.4 million, somewhere around there.
About a million and a half.
Yeah. And we've, we've tried, and the, you know, we've made some progress. The state legislature, I understand, it's, at least the finance committee is going to hold hearings again. They did that about, maybe five years ago, when nothing came of it. But we'll have to see if we get some improvement this year. Other than that, you guys did a good job.
Thank you.
And none of that's your fault.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Barry?
Can we get to work? Yeah, I'd just say that I think the budget is, this is my eighth budget I've reviewed with the township. And I think the Bob and the administration's done an outstanding job with it, very detailed. And, you know, I'm very proud to live in a township that has such high services and one of the lowest taxations in the, in the community. So, job well done. So, thank you.
Barry? Thanks. I just have a few comments. First, Bob and team, thank you very much, as no one else exclaimed. I love the $67. What a great visual. I mean, $67 is, it's a night out for a couple people to go to dinner. And you really do get so much for that $67. I, I have to comment, obviously, on the emergency services, because I do have a bit of a inside track, a little bit of a peek behind the curtain. You know, as Bob pointed out, this is a national crisis. I would call it a crisis. The volunteerism in the emergency services, specifically around the fire department, not as much in EMS anymore, but they still do have volunteers. There's just been an enormous loss of volunteers. And it is an aging-out issue. It's that the volunteers joining are at a much lower rate than the volunteers that are leaving and retiring. And it was just going to catch up with us eventually. I applaud the supervisors long before me, back in the mid-2000s, who, I actually came in front of this board, you know, with the fire department, you know, heart in hand, and said, "The volunteer fire department needs help." And back in 2008, they listened. I think some of the same comments that Dr. Rose made today, everybody really, fully understands that this is really a core responsibility of the supervisors, to provide these services. And they listened, and we started this program, and we're on a, a journey. And we're now, you know, 12 years into this journey, and we're going to continue on the journey, as, as, as Bob pointed out. And it is important, this is going to be an every-year thing, probably for the next five to seven years, until we, until we build this out proper. It's very difficult to get volunteers. The amount of training and education needed for a new volunteer recruit today is far more than it was, you know, 30 and 40 years ago, for the folks that are aging out. And basically, you're asking somebody to come and give two nights a week and one whole day on the weekend, just to start, for four months. You have to put your life on hold. And then there is an enormous amount of continuing education and training. Being in the volunteer fire department, regardless of whether you're a volunteer or a career firefighter, it's the same hazards, it's the same training, it's, everything is identical, with the exception of a paycheck. It's not a club. It's the real deal, and your skills have to be sharp. The township residents expect the fire department to be sharp. And so the amount of commitment is, is enormous. And that is really the, the reason that the volunteer, volunteerism has, has slowed down tremendously. It's not an easy answer, just to go out and get more volunteers. The other part of that is, that I want to mention, is that the backbone of the volunteer fire service is mutual aid. So Northampton Township, we have an agreement with every other township around us in the whole county. We all have a big agreement that we all sign. It's called the Mutual Aid Agreement. And the agreement is just that, we agree to help each other when we need it. And, you know, if there's ever a time that Northampton was a little light, well, maybe the other townships around us were okay, and they could come over here. And there were plenty of times where the townships around us were a little light, and we were heavy, and we would go over there. It just doesn't exist anymore. You know, that is what has started to deteriorate. And so, as Bob put it earlier, you know, we don't want to wait long to get a fire truck or an ambulance. And it's taking longer and longer, and the, and the trucks are coming from further and further away. So I hope, I hope that gave a little bit of color, at least around what's going to be required for the emergency services. We have a fantastic rescue squad. Trihampton Rescue Squad is, you know, I'm a little prejudiced, but, you know, probably one of the best in the county. They're, they're great to work with, and they're doing everything they can. But they're in a crisis too. And their crisis is lack of availability of EMT and paramedics. And they're doing well now. You saw their, their, their rate. But in order to stay competitive, we have to make sure that we fund them properly, so that their salaries are appropriate, and they can, you know, we want to get the best talent here. We want the best EMTs and the best paramedics taking care of our residents. And we have them today, and we want to keep them. So I think, all in all, you did a, a great, great job with the budget, and I'm certainly supportive.
I have a couple quick things.
Sure.
On that last item, I didn't mention, and I should have. With the tax increase in the EMS tax, we will pay about $10 per year per resident. That brings us in line with Upper and Lower Southampton, who also fund Trihampton, and they pay about $10 per year per resident for that service. So I wanted to mention that, I thought that was an important point. I also wanted to mention, and I think you, Mr. Chairman, just celebrated 40 years as a volunteer firefighter.
I did.
And I don't know how many people know that.
Thank you.
But you've been doing that for 40 years. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank the employees. You all know, I don't do much of anything from day to day. We have great, great people. And they make me look good, and they do a wonderful job for this community. They provide excellent service, they care, they're dedicated. And I would be really remiss if I didn't thank them publicly for everything that they do every day. So.
I don't think you'd get any argument, we have a phenomenal staff.
The argument that I don't do anything.
And, and we would, and, and yours is you're busy two weeks out of the whole year.
That's right.
You, you were six years old, and you became a firefighter, huh?
Yeah. Actually, it was a little bit off because of COVID. My, my 40th was actually last year.
Oh, was it?
Thank you. But, yeah, but thank you for the, the call out. And there's many others at the fire department that have many years of service, along with me. But, but thanks for that.
And aren't most of your firefighters volunteer? Aren't they also EMTs and, and paramedics and?
So the, the, all the career firefighters that we have on staff are all firefighters and EMTs. And that has worked out great for the township residents, because many times you'll maybe, you'll see an ambulance going somewhere and a fire truck going along with. Or in some cases, the fire truck may be closer than the ambulance, you know, depending on where the call is. So the fact that we have EMTs, we can start, you know, emergency lifesaving techniques until the, until the paramedics get there. We don't have any paramedics. And I guess, and maybe, just not to lose the point, our, our go-forward plan for the fire department is it be a combination department, you know, into the future, which will be both volunteer and career, working under the same organization and the same agency, under the same structure. So we still want volunteers. If anybody would like to volunteer, we, we definitely want you to come. We provide everything at the fire department. All you have to do is, is show up, and we'll do the rest. And we still are getting some volunteers, but just not at the, at the, at the proper rate. Good question. Thanks. Any other comments? Okay. So this is the proposed budget. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Bob, for a great presentation. Appreciate that.
You're here.
Next, we're going to move on to reports, but I just wanted to make one quick mention that I failed to do in the beginning. In the audience tonight are our two supervisor elects. Paula Gasper and Bob Salzer are here. They are here to start their onboarding process. So we, we look forward to more, more time with you in the future. Thank you. First report, Dr. Rose.
Okay. The first one I have is about the Senior Center. The seniors want to thank everyone in the community who attended their 17th Annual Bags and Bling Bingo, held on Friday, November 5. It was a night filled with lots of fun, wonderful prizes. The event was a huge success. I was the spotter, so if you cried bingo, I ran and picked up your card, brought it up. But it was a great, it was a great night. Time's running out to get your orders in for the Holiday wreath fundraiser. The seniors are selling fresh, beautiful 12-inch evergreen wreaths, and they're $14 each and include a big bow. Orders will be accepted through Monday, November 29, with delivery on December 2. And you can place an order by stopping by the center or downloading the order form off the center's website at northhamptonsc.com. On Friday night, December 3, from 5 to 9, the center will be holding a holiday marketplace. It's a great opportunity to shop in a festive, stress-free, fun, and safe environment. You can find a wide selection of unique holiday gifts while helping our local artists and vendors. And admission is free. For more information about the center or programs, feel free to call the center at 215-357-8199, or an email to nhsc@nhtwp.com. Check out our center's new website. And the seniors and the staff at the center want to wish everybody a safe, healthy, and happy Thanksgiving. On November 3, I attended the opening of the Star Center. It's the building across from the Senior Center, right next to the Richborough Middle School. It is a beautiful, beautiful center, and it houses the Achieve and the Sloan Schools. I was extremely impressed, and I just wanted to give them a shout-out, that it's just a beautiful facility, and it's, it's wonderful for our residents that need it. Next, I'd like to talk about Park and Rec. I do want to give a special thanks and a job well done to the staff, the volunteers, and the sponsors, and the participants who made Halloween Happenings Parade, Trunk or Treat, and Scarecrow Row a huge success. We, the, Mrs. Silver and Mr. Selicar, Selitucker and I dressed up as superheroes, and we were the judges of the Halloween Parade. And it was a, a fun time was had by all. They had, everybody had great costumes, I think the best I've seen, and it was a tremendous day, and I know what a good time was had by all. The new winter brochure is on its way, and will be in your mailbox the first week in December. Parks and Rec is offering in-person hybrid and virtual classes this winter, delivering comfort, quality, and convenience with every class. Stay warm this winter at our place or yours. Do you love to dance to country music? Then Country Zumba will, is what you want to check out. Why not stay fit and lose weight while enjoying what you love? It's Zumba, y'all. Also, does your child dream of creating their own video games? Parks and Rec has entered into a partnership with Game U, offering virtual classes by industry professionals on every aspect of game design, whether it's coding, 2D, or 3D art and design, or creating mods in Minecraft or Roblox, we have you covered. There's no supply chain shortage in Parks and Rec, so perhaps you want to gift someone a Parks and Rec class or gift certificate. Now, the important news. Now, when Thanksgiving is over, the December holidays are right around the corner. Once again, our Park and Rec staff has been busy planning some new events, so our residents can have the opportunity to celebrate. Mrs. Claus, who's unable to fly at night, so she's making a visit on Saturday, December 4, at noon this year. She will be meeting us at the Municipal Park Wetzel Pavilion for Storytime with Mrs. Claus. The outdoor pavilion will be decorated with holiday spirit, and Mrs. Claus is even bringing her heaters to keep us warm. Mrs. Claus will be reading stories to the children, and Santa will be collecting letters from the children. He and Mrs. Claus and their favorite reindeer He and Mrs. Claus and their favorite reindeer will be available for family photos. A take-home craft, hot cocoa cookies, and lots of holiday cheer will get you in the spirit of the season. But you must remember to register soon, as space is limited. Fun for the entire family is planned outside at the municipal park. Starting December 4th, take a walk at the Northampton Municipal Park to enjoy the wonders of the season. Start at the end of the park's Hatboro Road parking lot, where there'll be a community tree ready to be decorated by you. Share a special memento from the holiday season that you celebrate. Place one non-breakable ornament to fill the tree with traditions that will be shared with the community as they stroll the park trails. Then continue on the pathway towards the amphitheater and take in the sounds of the season as songs from the Bucks County Women's Chorus will fill the air. Push the buttons at each caroling station to hear the chorus sing holiday favorites, and join in your own caroling on the Trail of Cheer. Afterward, continue your walk to the mall area of the Wetzel Pavilion to enjoy the decorated trees that line the walkway. Girl Scouts from Northampton have volunteered to adorn the area and add their special touch for all to enjoy. And there's more. Join in the Light the Night contest showcasing Northampton homes that like to offer a holiday flair to their neighborhoods. Decorate your home and nominate it to the list of area houses that like to go over the top for the season. You could win a top three Best People's Choice Award. The public can view and vote for their favorites on a self-guided, interactive app, which designates all of the decorated homes. You can vote for your favorites and add some holiday cheer to, to those who put in so much effort to light up the season for all to see. Details on this program and all holiday events can be viewed at Parks and Rec website, northhamptonrec.com. And I would just like to say, I wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and we're very grateful for another great year here at Northampton Township.
Thanks, Kim. Frank?
Well, I'll get this off. On November 11th, the Veterans Advisory Commission ran an event here in front of the township, you know, the normal veteran ceremony that we do every year. Principal speaker was Dr. Mark Carr, who is a retired Army Colonel, a resident of Northampton Township, the Holland area. And Dr. Dr. Carr was recalled active duty numerous times to, to serve in the Middle East in the, you know, in, in his specialty, his medical specialty. He gave a very interesting talk, and then you could see the emotion when he started talking about what he saw over there, dealing with the wounded soldiers. So, we also had remarks from Congressman Mike Fitzpatrick. It was a very well-attended event, and probably one of the best I've seen that they, that we've done on Veterans Day, but next year, probably be even better. The other item, other thing I'd like to talk about is the Board of the Municipal Authority voted for a budget with no increase in water and sewer fees this year, and that will be the fifth year in a row with no increases. That's all I have.
Thanks, Frank. Barry?
Nothing to report tonight. Everything's pretty quiet. Funding's only now. Thanks.
Thanks, Barry.
The library board usually meets on Thursdays, and with the holidays coming up, we were going to meet on Thursday, December the 2nd. But since that will be my last meeting, and that is also the evening my daughter, Julie Goldstein, will be installed as president of the Bucks County Bar Association, we have agreed to move the meeting to Wednesday, December the 1st, at 7:30. The members of the library board are residents who are dedicated to working with the library staff to make our library the best in the county. Those members are Eleonora Rosso, Chip Heim, Dr. Michael May, Charles Beam, Charlene Di Sarlo, Marcy Lyons Di Camillo, and Janet Braker. I just wanted to give them a shout out because of the wonderful job that they do. I talked about SWIP SWAC with a contract, but in our township, from December the 16th through March 31st, yard waste is picked up the same day as your trash collection. You may set out a maximum of five containers of yard waste with your regular household trash. This yard waste is not composted, so it does not have to be in biodegradable bags. All dumpsters will remain in place until December the 15th, when the yard waste schedule returns to the normal off-season schedule. Park Maintenance Building, Old Police Station Parking Lot, and Hampton Estates will be there till December the 15th, but the Big Meadow Dumpster will be removed on, yesterday. Well, it was removed on the 15th, so it's not there anymore. Please remember to leave from now until December the 15th, December the 16th, please leave your yard waste at the curb for Saturday collection. I just wanted to remind everyone of that. And that's it.
Thanks, Eileen. I'll just have a few comments. First, I, Kim talked about it, we, we had a great time at the Halloween Happening, such a, such a fun, the staff does such a great job. There were so many people out this year. It was nice to see people getting back out into, into the community. And, you know, I just recommend anybody that wants to participate in some of those contests next year, go ahead and get a group of folks together and do it. It's, it's a fun time, and there was a lot of very cool scarecrows. Something that I recently learned, that I think is worth mentioning, the Council Rock School District Achieve Program has been sending their Achieve students up to the Northampton Valley Country Club for internships. And this is to help them really learn some real-life skills and experiences. And this has been happening since 2019. I guess it got put on hold a little bit during COVID, which is maybe why it wasn't as, as visible. But this is a really nice program for them to get up there. They learn to do banquet setups and things like that. And they go one, one to three times a week. So, kudos for, for Council Rock to reaching out, and the staff up at the Country Club for, for working with, with these students and, you know, helping them along in their journey to learn some of these skills. Put on my safety hat for a minute, so a couple things. We're coming into fireplace season. Remember to have your fireplace and chimney properly inspected and cleaned before you use it this year. It's very important to prevent unnecessary damage to your house. And Thanksgiving is coming, and I always just like to mention, there are those out there that like to use turkey fryers. Make sure you follow the directions carefully. They can be quite dangerous. And if you haven't used your oven in a while, or don't normally use it, check it before that day. Make sure it's clean, make sure it's operational. An enormous amount of people use their oven to store things, like potato chips and bread and things, and they forget about that, and they turn the oven on to heat it, and you know what happens after that. So, just, just take a look at that. That's all I have tonight, other than wishing everybody certainly a happy Thanksgiving holiday coming up next week.
Adam, do you know anything about the, the food pickup that we got, that we had? The food collection?
I, I know that it happened. I didn't get any information on how successful it was. I'm hoping that we have a report out, at least for next meeting.
Okay, good.
Thanks. Bob, anything else to report tonight?
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Joe, solicitor's report?
Thank you. The records should reflect that the board met in an executive session for approximately 30 minutes immediately prior to this evening's meeting. In attendance for that executive session were the five members of the Board of Supervisors, the Township Manager, the Assistant Township Manager, the Township Engineer, and Councilwoman -elect Paula Gasper.
Supervisor.
Or Supervisor, I'm sorry. Wrong township. Discussed during the executive session were two matters of pending litigation. No official action was taken during the executive session regarding either of those matters, and no official action was required at this evening's meeting as a result of that executive session. Other than that, I'd just like to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving, as well as the community that you represent.
Thanks, Joe. Amanda, engineer's report?
Yeah, report.
Thanks. Can I ask you a quick question? And maybe this is more for Bob. Who, who, who is watching after the sidewalk construction in Richborough and inspecting that? Is that?
McMahon.
McMahon? So, we, there are third-party inspectors out, making sure that they're?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Make sure I didn't miss anybody. Okay, public comment for non-agenda items, and we have one. Joe Johnston. Hello again, Joe?
Yes, hello again. Joe Johnston, 41 Grant Drive. At the first comment, I did ask two questions. Only one was answered. The question that was not answered was, I had asked what the total debt was and the approximate payoff date. Last year, it was, I had it written on another piece of paper. Doesn't matter. I would just like to know what it's going to be for this year upcoming. And secondly, I'd like to say that, you know, on the, on the paving, I'm sorry to hear we're running low on money unexpectedly. You did a great job on, in my neck of the woods, you know, Lower Holland Road was, was addressed, and they did a great job. But Elm Avenue is very dangerous right now. It's a game of chicken. People swerving in and out of the, of the potholes. Hopefully, that, that's on the list for repair. Second, you know, I would see what's going on with the fire department and all, you know, everybody's for that. You know, I had some questions early on, but I, one thing I didn't hear was that, and I came across this when I was trying to renew my homeowner's insurance, and, you know, there's a thing called, and I'm sure you know tons more than I do about it, is the fire protection class rating. So, when this is all done, it's chances are that we could get a better rating, which would equate to lower homeowner's insurance for our residents. So, I think that's a point that's, you know, a selling point. Not that we need it, but, you know, it, it's something good, something positive. All right? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. And I, I'll add to that, just, that's a great point. Thanks for bringing that up. That is something that the fire department does stay connected with, and we make sure that our ratings are up to date based on our equipment and our manpower. So, if there is ever an opportunity to, to get that reflected, it automatically happens through the insurance. So, good, good call out. Thank you.
All right.
Are you going to answer him now?
If you have, if you have an answer to his question, yeah?
Sure.
Of course.
Our total debt obligation's about $63 million. We pay about $2.8 million a year, at least next year we will, for, toward that debt service.
Okay.
If that answers, I think that was the question.
The primary payoff date is, if you have?
The payoff date, 24 more years.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Again, happy Thanksgiving to all. With no other items on the agenda, the meeting is closed. Adjourned.